We'll move on to the next, next up I have Justin Kinney. Who is with Biosafety Now. Biosafety Now sounds like something we should have.
Okay, so Chairman, Chairman Murphy, members of the committee, thank you very much for hearing my testimony today. Just want to let you know I have about, about 20 minutes of prepared testimony that I'm going to read through and I'll certainly be very happy to take questions. My name is Dr. Justin Kinney. I am an associate professor of quantitative biology at Cold Spring Harbor Laboratory in New York. I run an active biological research laboratory and serve as principal investigator on two grants from the U.S. National Institutes of Health. I am also a co-founder of Biosafety Now, a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) nonprofit based in New Jersey, whose goal is to prevent future lab-generated pandemics. I am not receiving any financial compensation for testifying here today, either from Biosafety Now or from any other organization or individual. I have traveled here from New York City at my own expense only to express my opinion as a concerned scientist. I will also be speaking for Dr. Richard Eubright, who is unable to appear today. Dr. Eubright is a professor of chemistry and chemical biology at Rutgers University in New Jersey, a laboratory head at the Waxman Institute for Microbiology and a co-founder of Biosafety Now. Dr. Eubright is an expert on biosafety practices and procedures and has been working for over 20 years to prevent lab-generated pandemics. Dr. Eubright is not receiving any financial compensation for this testimony, either from Biosafety Now or from other organizations or individuals. Like me, Dr. Eubright is speaking out only as a concerned scientist. Dr. Eubright and I urge you to support Assembly Bill 413. The bill is needed to protect the public from the hazards of a very narrow but extremely dangerous type of scientific research. Laboratory accidents happen. They happen because scientists are human and humans make mistakes. The overwhelming majority of scientific research is safe and only a small fraction of laboratory accidents pose any risks to the public. Accidents involving potential pandemic pathogens, however, can have catastrophic consequences. Potential pandemic pathogens are viruses and bacteria that, if released, could spread uncontrollably through the human population and potentially cause a devastating pandemic. Assembly Bill 413 will protect the public from the hazards of research on potential pandemic pathogens. The bill will do this without having significant costs or adverse impacts. This is common sense, nonpartisan legislation that deserves broad-based support. Assembly Bill 413 contains two important provisions. The bill's first provision will establish public transparency for research on potential pandemic pathogens. Currently, laboratories that study potential pandemic pathogens are not required to inform state or local governments about where the research is performed, which pathogens they possess, or the potential public health impacts if a pathogen escapes. Assembly Bill 413 will require these laboratories to provide this information to the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. Disclosure of this information is absolutely essential. First responders need this information to help them avoid accidental infection when responding to laboratory emergencies. Healthcare providers need this information to diagnose and prevent the spread of laboratory-acquired infections. In the event of a laboratory accident, first responders and healthcare providers having this information could well make the difference between rapid pathogen containment and an uncontrolled disease outbreak. The bill's second provision prohibits gain-of-function research on potential pandemic pathogens, that is, research that makes these pathogens even more dangerous to humans than they already are. Some have expressed concerns that this prohibition would hamper biomedical research. These concerns are unfounded. Gain-of-function research on potential pandemic pathogens constitutes less than 0.01% of biomedical research. And importantly, gain-of-function research on potential pandemic pathogens is not needed and is not used to help develop vaccines or disease treatments. Based on publicly available information, the bill's second provision will affect at most one laboratory in the state of Wisconsin, a virology laboratory at the University of Wisconsin-Madison led by Dr. Yoshihiro Kaweoka. This provision is important, though, because the Kaweoka lab has performed gain-of-function research that poses extreme risks to public health. In 2011, the Kaweoka laboratory constructed, then over the next decades studied genetically engineered avian influenza viruses that can transmit efficiently among mammals. The natural forms of these avian influenza viruses kill up to two-thirds of the people they infect, but they transmit poorly from person to person. If the genetically engineered avian influenza viruses constructed by the Kaweoka laboratory were to escape, they may be able to transmit easily from person to person and cause a pandemic far more devastating than COVID-19. The U.S. federal government has, for decades, failed to enact legislation that protects the public from accidents at laboratories that study and genetically engineer potential pandemic pathogens. Shockingly, federal enaction continues despite the FBI and Department of Energy assessing that the COVID-19 pandemic was most likely caused by an accident at a laboratory in Wuhan, China, doing exactly this kind of research. States must therefore act to protect their residents. By establishing public transparency for high-risk pathogen research and by prohibiting the highest-risk type of pathogen research, Assembly Bill 413 will provide urgently needed protections for the residents of Wisconsin, for the citizens of the United States, and for all members of the global community.[425.03][425.03][Music] Eubright and I do recommend that three amendments be made to Assembly Bill 413. These amendment bill, these amendments are needed to properly scope the type of research that is covered, as well as the role of DHS in handling disclosures. Amendment one would change the definition of potential pandemic pathogen to the definition in the January 2023 recommendation by the U.S. National Science Advisory Board for Biosecurity, or NSABB. The definition of potential pandemic pathogen that is currently in Assembly Bill 413 is overly broad. The mismatch between the specific language of the bill and the intent of the bill appears to be a major driver behind the inaccurate cost assessments provided by DHS and the University of Wisconsin system. Amendment two would further clarify the NSABB definition by listing explicit examples of pathogens that match the NSABB definition. Amendment three would clarify that research performed on potential pandemic pathogens that are the products of previous gain-of-function experiments are also prohibited. The laboratory of Yoshihiro Kaweoka has performed multiple gain-of-function experiments in the past and likely has, in storage, multiple pathogens that are the product of this research. This amendment is needed to ensure that those pathogens are not grandfathered in, as experiments on those pathogens is just as dangerous as new gain-of-function experiments would be. So, I now want to discuss the costs and impacts. Assembly Bill 413, if amended as suggested, will not incur significant costs and will not have significant adverse impacts. In particular, the bill will not impose significant costs on taxpayers of Wisconsin, on the University of Wisconsin system, or on individual scientific laboratories operating in Wisconsin. The bill will not adversely impact the competitiveness or productivity of scientific laboratories in the University of Wisconsin system or of Wisconsin biotechnology companies. And the bill will not adversely affect the development of any vaccines or disease treatments. In particular, the substantial costs and adverse impacts that are anticipated by DHS and by the University of Wisconsin system will not be realized if the three amendments are adopted. DHS assesses that the bill will generate a high volume of disclosures and that handling disclosures will require the hiring of six full-time employees at a cost of approximately $1.7 million per year. This assessment greatly overstates the cost of the legislation as intended. The legislation as intended would likely not require the hiring of any new employees or at most would require the hiring of one part-time employee. The inaccuracy of the DHS estimates appears to have resulted from incorrect assumptions about the role of DHS as described by the legislation and by the overly broad definition of potential pandemic pathogen, which our proposed amendments would fix. Specifically, DHS assumes that, quote, "this potential," sorry, quote, "this proposal requires the department to review all research proposals pertaining to potential pandemic pathogens. In addition to review of the written proposal, it is assumed that the department would also inspect physical research facilities to ensure compliance with security and environmental standards." Currently, the department does not have staff who conduct these activities and would need a new unit to review the proposals. These assumptions are incorrect. Researchers will be submitting disclosures, not scientific proposals, that require in-depth technical review. The role of DHS will be only to, one, communicate information in the disclosures to the relevant federal, state, or local authorities; two, ensure that adequate resources are in place to respond to an accidental pathogen escape; and, three, determine whether the risks of the research, as described by the scientists submitting the disclosure, poses an unjustified risk to public health and to seek an injunction in cases where there is unjustified risk. I emphasize that the bill requires that the likely consequences of an accidental pathogen escape be assessed and described by the researcher submitting the disclosure, not by DHS. The legislation does not mandate any technical assessment of the science in the disclosures and does not establish any new inspection regime. DHS also states that, quote, "Based on the broad definition of potential pandemic, of pandemic pathogen, it is difficult to estimate the number of proposals that will be submitted annually, but is assumed that there will be a high volume of proposals to review." This statement makes, makes it clear that the overly broad definition of potential pandemic pathogen that is currently in the legislation is causing the number of disclosures to be vastly overestimated. We estimate that at most one to three dozen labs in the entire state of Wisconsin work on bona fide potential pandemic pathogens. Consequently, there are unlikely to be more than a few dozen disclosures per year if the language in the legislation is appropriately scoped. The three suggested amendments will provide this appropriate scope. The University of Wisconsin system estimates that thousands of research, quote, "thousands of research projects would require DHS review each year, resulting in the loss of faculty, productivity, and competitiveness." This vastly overstates the volume of projects that would be received, the role of DHS, and the resulting effect on researchers. Again, we estimate that most one to three dozen labs in the state of Wisconsin handle potential pandemic pathogens and would need to submit disclosures. These disclosures would not be reviewed by DHS, they would simply be disclosed to DHS. And the work that researchers put into each disclosure would be minimal and largely redundant with grants and progress reports that those researchers have already prepared. The University of Wisconsin system also states that, quote, "Additionally, most research grants would not allow the research to begin 90 days or more from the date of the award, which could result in the returning of grant monies or declining an award." This is just simply not true. The proposed bill explicitly permits the disclosure of anticipated research and imposes no requirement whatsoever that funds be in place to support that anticipated research prior to disclosure. There is no reason why a disclosure of anticipated research cannot be made to DHS more than 90 days before any grant funds are awarded. Indeed, it commonly takes eight to 12 months from the date of a grant submission to the notice of award. If a disclosure is made to DHS at the time of grant submission, there is no reason why any awarded funds would need to be returned. In summary, if the above amendments are adopted, one, there will be no impact at all on the vast majority of faculty in the University of Wisconsin system, including an overwhelming majority of faculty in the biological sciences, including those that study human diseases, there will be no significant, or agricultural diseases, there will be no significant adverse impact on the productivity or competitiveness of the small fraction of University of Wisconsin faculty that would be subjected to the disclosure requirement. And the ban on gain-of-function research would likely affect at most one laboratory, the laboratory of Yoshihiro Kaweoka, and even then would affect at most a subset of the research done in that laboratory. It is possible that none of the ongoing research projects in Dr. Kaweoka's lab will be affected by this ban. If any research projects are affected by this ban, we anticipate that Dr. Kaweoka would be able to repurpose existing awards towards research that is not subject to the ban. We therefore do not anticipate any substantial adverse impacts of Assembly Bill 413 on the University of Wisconsin system. And finally, I want to go over the proposed amendments. We propose the following three amendments, which are needed to properly scope the definition of potential pandemic pathogen and to avoid the products of prior gain-of-function research on potential pandemic pathogens from being grandfathered in. The first amendment would replace the definition of potentially pandemic pathogen with the definition proposed by the NSABB. This definition is as follows: Potentially pandemic pathogen means a virus, bacterium, fungus, or eukaryotic parasite, or any strain or variant of a virus, bacterium, fungus, or eukaryotic parasite that is, one, likely moderately or highly transmissible and likely capable of wide and uncontrollable spread in human populations, and/or, two, likely moderately or highly virulent and likely to cause significant morbidity and/or mortality in humans. And in addition, three, likely to pose a severe threat to public health, the capacity of health systems to function, or national security. So I want to emphasize this point. If the pathogen is not likely to pose severe risk to public health, the capacity of health systems to function, or national security, it is not a potential pandemic pathogen and is not subject to this bill at all. Okay, so it's only the stuff that you really have to worry about that is, that the term "potential pandemic pathogen" refers to. In Amendment two, we suggest appending the following text to the definition of potential pandemic pathogen. This is to make crystal clear what the definition is. Potentially pandemic pathogens include influenza viruses other than seasonal influenza viruses, SARS and MERS coronaviruses, Hennepah viruses, filoviruses, orthopox viruses, and the bacterium Yersinia pestis, which causes plague. In Amendment three, we suggest revising the prohibition to, read, prohibition, "No institution or college campus may conduct or provide funding to another entity to conduct gain-of-function research on potentially pandemic pathogens," or, this is the amendment, "or to conduct research on potentially pandemic pathogens that are the product of prior gain-of-function research." And then there are two other sections that refer to technical colleges and institutions of higher education. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
So you started out your testimony talking about the fact that you weren't paid to come here or any of that sort of thing. So, your, your organization, how is it funded or how?
So, Bryce Nichols, who is here today, he's a co-founder. We're, we're basically not funded.[1119.08][1119.08][Laughter] We solicit online donations, we sell mugs, we haven't raised more than about, okay, yeah, Bryce will talk about that. I mean, we basically don't have any money.[1139.47][1139.47][Laughter] To the point where I'm not even, I'm not even getting reimbursed for this travel. And, and we formed this organization solely because we were just concerned about the dangers of this research and that nothing was being done. I should emphasize, since the COVID-19 pandemic, there have been zero new federal regulations or policies or laws to rein in this kind of research. Zero. Nothing has been done, and that's why we feel this is so urgent.
How long has your organization been in place?
Did you, were you sort of, the genesis of your organization was it COVID? Did you come, or were you around before that?
So, we started Biosafety Now in the fall of 2022. It was very much a response to the COVID pandemic. It was meant to, so Richard Eubright, who's one of the co-founders, has been working for over 20 years at many different levels to warn against and guard against the dangers of potential pandemic pathogen research. We formed this organization to provide a public front to that effort and to help mobilize people to, you know, engage in that effort. And it was really only after we realized that the scientific community was not going to take appropriate measures in response to the COVID-19 pandemic that we decided we had to act.
Were you having concerns before COVID? I mean, or did that sort of?
I was oblivious. So, Richard, Richard, Richard has been working on this since, you know, since the anthrax attacks in 2001. I was oblivious to this, and I think, you know, Bryce can, will testify that he was oblivious to this. And I think we're largely working in this area because, you know, we were, we became aware of Richard's efforts. And, and, you know, his exposure to this whole issue of biosafety and potential pandemic pathogens is really what opened our eyes. And then, you know, the thing that really motivated us to take action was the scientific community is not doing anything. I mean, I, I'm just horrified as a scientist to see, you know, the, just the recklessness of the research and not only that, but the cover-up of the role that scientists might have likely played in starting this pandemic.
So, I'm assuming that the university might say, well, you know, if a law like this gets passed, Dr. Kaweoka will leave and go somewhere else. I don't know. What, is that?
I mean, I don't know. The, I will say, I think it would be silly. The, well, hold on, I just want to make sure I answer this well. So, the research that Dr. Kaweoka is doing, this, this very highly dangerous gain-of-function research, it doesn't need to be done. Just from a scientific standpoint, it doesn't need to be done. There are so many different ways to study these systems. You can learn an enormous amount about how these viruses work and about how they might spill over into the human populations without actually making a virus that will do that. And so...
And it gets to the whole question that, that kind of came up earlier a little bit about the cost-benefit relationship where, you know, why do we want to do this at all?
So, that's a really good question. I think it is, I don't see any good reason to do this. No vaccines or disease treatments have come out of previous gain-of-function research on potential pandemic pathogens. It played no role in developing the COVID vaccine, has played no role in developing any flu vaccines or anything like that. But the thing is, for some reason, and I really worry that this is just a pathology in the scientific profession, it's easy to publish and to get grant money for. It's considered, it's, it's considered like transgressive research, right? It's considered really cutting-edge. And so, in a way, it's fashionable, but it's just not needed. And honestly, there's, I don't even, there's not even that much money in it. It's really just, but when Dr. Kaweoka genetically engineered this avian influenza to be transmissible between mammals and thus presumably humans, that was published in Nature. Publishing a scientific article in Nature is a really big deal for a scientist. It gets you speaking engagements, it gets you, I mean, it gets you invitations to conferences, it gets you awards, it gets you grant money. And so, I really wor, and then Dr. Ron Fouchier at the, at the Erasmus Medical Institute in the Netherlands published an article the same, around the same time in Science. And, you know, both Dr. Kaweoka and Dr. Fouchier have become really famous as a result of doing this research. It has really benefited their careers. So I think what you're seeing here is that the main benefit is to the careers of the people doing the research, but the actual benefits to, you know, development of drugs or disease treatments is, is very minimal. And even what we learn about basic science is minimal, whereas the risks are just unparalleled by any other area of science.
So, in a previous life, I had a job in which I looked at a fair amount of scientific research and different, different studies, and of course, they all start with an abstract. And usually within that abstract, you know, it sets out the thesis, you know, what, what am I trying to accomplish here? And so I'm trying to understand a little bit within the realm of this research. It sounds a little bit like we're trying things to see if we can do them or not. But there doesn't seem to be necessarily maybe an end goal to, you know?
Okay, yeah, so I...
What is the beneficial?
I mean, I could go into that. In the, in the abstracts of Dr. Kaweoka's 2012 Nature paper and in the grants that EcoHealth Alliance submit in support of the research at the Wuhan Institute of Virology that likely caused the COVID-19 pandemic, the goal is to predict the evolution of viruses. That is the goal. It is to try and predict how viruses, how new viruses, how viruses currently in animals might evolve in a way that threatens human populations. That is the goal. So, the way they go about doing that research is by taking those viruses, introducing genetic modifications that they think nature might eventually put into them to create the most dangerous possible virus. That's how they go about doing it. Now, if it sounds insane, that's because it is. It is insane. And the thing is, look, in molecular biology, virology, there are so many different kinds of experiments you can do. You can learn an enormous amount about how a virus enters cells, for instance, by using what are called pseudovirus particles. So these are, they're, they're like viruses, except they can't replicate, right? So there you can, you know, do your experiments with, with particles that have no threat whatsoever, that pose no threat whatsoever to humans, but still learn an enormous amount about the very specific mutations that are needed to make that virus more infectious to humans. You can also work with animal systems, you know, that you genetically engineer to become susceptible to the virus, but in a way that only that one animal, that only that specific animal that you bred would be susceptible, not other animals. And so, there's an enormous amount that we can learn about viruses by just doing those types of experiments. Now, some scientists will argue, well, you don't learn everything that you can learn by making, that you could learn by making the live virus. And I would say, yes, that's true, but is that, you know, incremental additional amount of research, like, knowledge worth the risk of causing a pandemic far worse than COVID-19? Like, it just, it doesn't make any sense. And I should emphasize that, you know, like, the vaccines that were made for, the incredibly, the incredible vaccines that were developed for COVID-19, they didn't use any of this kind of research at all. And in general, you know, we, people do not make vaccines against viruses that do not exist, right? We make viruses that do exist and circulate in human populations. So, yeah, so I hope that answers your question.
No, I, and thank you very much.
Because I, you know, you kind of helped me get to the whole balancing act about what the pros, you know, what the benefits and what the risks are. Thank you. Committee, I'm dominating this, this young man's dying here, I'd like to hear from some of the rescue. Anybody have questions? Representative Johnson, then we'll go to Representative O'Connor.
The, you've indicated that your group isn't doing research per se, but you're really here to enlighten the public on the risk that this research is potentially... here to enlighten the public on the risk that this research is potentially could expose the public to, is that correct?
Yes, but we, Bryce, Richard, and I are professional scientists who, who conduct research for a living, biological research for a living.
So whether the lab that we put out of business, you have no business interest to replacing the work that they do?
I have no business interest or scientific interest whatsoever in causing negative effects on the Kawayoka lab. In fact, I don't think this bill would actually even cause negative effects on the Kawayoka lab. It would just limit a, one subset of the research that they do and would probably not require giving up any grant money.
And you have proposed very specific language for improving the bill as it's currently written to address what you consider the, what I'll consider the extreme edge of biological virus research, correct?
Yes.
If we restrict this in our location, in our country, and other scientific communities in the world do not, what would lead you to believe that we will never encounter it?
Well, just passing this bill here today, of course, would not prohibit this kind of research elsewhere, but it would set, but one, it would, it would protect against a very significant fraction of the dangerous research that is done in the United States. Dr. Kawayoka's lab has done some of the most dangerous experiments ever done by scientists. And so just that protection would be meaningful. And then the other thing is, it would set a really important precedent for legislation that can be adopted elsewhere in order to rein in this type of research. I should note that the, the U.S. is really the world leader in biology, kind of, without peer. And the rules and regulations that the U.S. adopts to regulate biological research are often quickly adopted in other countries. And I should emphasize, there's a lot of restrictions on biological research. I mean, there's a lot of restrictions on what you can do with human subjects, there's a lot of restrictions on what you can do with animals. So the whole idea of restricting biological research, it's not new. It's something we do all the time, it's just not done for this one specific class of research.
The, the, not all this research ends up being done for the benefit of mankind, as it may turn out. It may be done for defense. Biological warfare may be very dastardly. If we don't ever explore it, someone else does, are we at a disadvantage for protecting our population?
So this ban would have, in our estimate, no negative consequences on biodefense. So the Bioweapons Convention prevents the United States from developing offensive biological weapons. It does not prevent the United States from developing defensive countermeasures such as vaccines and disease treatments, and for exploring how to defend against viruses. And this sort of research is just not needed to develop those sorts of countermeasures. And, you know, the Biological Weapons Convention was adopted because, you know, countries realize that you just can't control these pathogens, that, you know, they're not like nuclear we, they can kill as many people as nuclear weapons.
More so.
Yeah, far more. But they can't be controlled the way you can control nuclear weapons, because they're, they're microscopic, they can get out, and as we saw with COVID-19, you know, it was all over the place by the time people really realized it was spreading. So really, what I view this law as, as prohibiting, like, the physics department at the University of Madison, Wisconsin, from building their own hydrogen bomb for research purposes. You know, it's really that level of concern that this is about. And I should note that none of, I have heard absolutely no statements by any of the people who do this kind of research about its need for biodefense. It's all about predicting evolution.
Representative O'Connor?
First, thank you for your testimony, which was extremely helpful. The members of this committee, we sit and listen to a myriad of subjects every day, and I sort of walked in with a little bit of a cloudy feeling about what am I doing trying to figure out this piece of science? And I do care about the impact on our university system, on our research here in Wisconsin. And the amendments that you proposed really give me a high level of comfort related to this. But I'm going to go off on a little tangent here just because it's a common subject of conversation, and it relates to COVID-19. Something that more and more appears to be evidence this was generated in the lab. But I'm also concerned about the RNA-related vaccines. Two questions. Are they vaccines? And are they effective?
I believe the RNA vaccines are highly effective. They, they work by introducing the mRNA of the, the...
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a, a timeout on that. That really is not the subject of this particular bill, and so I'm not going to start going off in that direction.
I should say, I just want to say that I am going to be here for the rest of the day, and I'd be happy to talk with any of you after the meeting.
Any other questions from committee for this gentleman? See, none? Thank you very much. Your testimony was awesome.
Excellent.
I wish we could get that kind of great technical information on every bill.
Oh, you're welcome, it's my pleasure.